We'll call the Johnson City Council Work Session number 22-20 to order. Cindy Roque, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
We have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is the Capital Improvement Plan 23, 24 through 27, 28 Discussion Roads, Water, and Waste Water Improvements.
Good evening.
Hi.
I guess you're going to have lots of questions. I'm the only one on the agenda tonight for the work session.
Matt, if you'll just indulge me tonight, if you could speak into the speaker.
Okay, is this better?
Sorry.
No, that's fine. So we'll go ahead and with our capital improvement program, we'll go ahead and start with our roadways. And our first project is the Town or Drive project. This would be the Troused property there to the east. That's Highway 141. And then this would be the road.
Not yet.
Maybe easier if I can stand up here and kind of point around on the map, so. So on our Town or Drive project, this is a, it's an ongoing discussion for the relocation of the original Town or Drive. It would be at the Tight Diamond Interchange that's projected on our CIP in the future. This would be Town or running from the Highway 141 over to highway or street, 121st Street. That's kind of in the design for 2026 timeframe, roughly around 800,000. And then construction would begin in 27, 28, roughly 300, or 3 million, $3.5 million. That would be a joint effort between us, the developer, the City of Johnston, the developer, as well as Polk County. Go ahead and move to the next one. The next one is our reoccurring program. It's our sidewalk program. We just completed Phase One or Segment One with the ramps. The city took that on this year. Completed that. We will be inspecting sidewalks over the winter months and for Segment One as well. And send notices to the residents to fix any sidewalks or let them join our program. They can opt into our program to have our contractor fix those. You can see we've got the city broken down into eight segments. And Segment One is the really light yellow here in the lower corner. Here's Merle Hay Road. We really took care of our sidewalks and installed new sidewalks with all of our east of Merle Hay projects, south of 62nd. So this really focuses on that Green Meadows, the original Green Meadows neighborhood. And then we'll move over into Segment Two the following year, and it'll just kind of follow the numerical numbers. But Segment Two would be then the Green Meadows West neighborhood. And we're roughly, it's right around $500,000 each year that we put towards that program. Next slide. So then we jump to our eastern Merle Hay improvements north of 62nd. During some of our conversations at the Public Works ad hoc level, we did modify this. We actually pushed it back one, and we'll get into why we did that on our next slide. But Phase One is slated to start design in '24, '25. And then we'll relocate utilities and acquire right-of-way consecutive year '25, '26 with construction to follow that. There will be a public involvement process that precedes the design process '24, '25. So that also allows us a little bit additional time to go through and get our assessment policy and connection fees set up. Next slide. So this is why we, the Northwest 62nd Avenue from 54th to Beaver Drive is what we actually just kind of swapped the first phase of the east of Merle Hay, north of 62nd with. This kind of gives that natural progression from south of 62nd up through the neighborhoods into north of 62nd. So we still have the segment here where we left off with the Merle Hay and 62nd intersection project. We went just past 54th here, just past Lawson Elementary. So we still have the segment that is east of Lawson, all the way over to Beaver Drive that will be looking to design in '23, '24. And then we'll follow that same process. We have a three-year process of relocating utilities, acquiring that right-of-way to actually construct the project. And that would be constructed in '25, '26.
Would you, is there a trail that would be incorporated along?
Yeah, we'll continue to incorporate the trail. When we did the intersection project, we have the trail that runs on the south side of the roadway. And then we put in this temporary sidewalk to connect the neighborhoods. So what we would end up doing is we would take that sidewalk out with the project and put the trail in that would connect with Beaver Drive.
So at the end of the day, there'd be a 10-foot trail on the south side of 62nd, all the way to Beaver?
Correct. The next project is Northwest 107th. So this would be north of 70th Avenue up to 78th. This would be a joint project with Grimes. The dividing line's right down the center of the road. So we've been in talks with Grimes. I've talked with their Public Works Director as recently as last week. We were talking about getting a 28E together. We've got another joint project with them, 100th Street from 54th to 62nd, that we have 75% of that project. But with, so with Northwest 107th, they have some of those capabilities in-house to do the design on this project. And really what we're talking about for 107th is really just kind of milling off some of the existing asphalt, patching some of the bad areas, and then applying another coat of asphalt over the top of that. That generally will get you approximately anywhere from 10 to 15 years. And it's sort of a lower-volume road for us right now. We don't have very many neighborhoods that are connected off of that. Grimes does have a trail on their side of the road. So with that, we would be connecting Johnston's neighborhood. We would be putting crossings from our existing neighborhoods over to that trail so that they can have access to that since there is not a sidewalk on the east side of 107th. So if we can get started on that design later this year, we would look at construction in '23, '24 timeframe. Next slide.
Matt, before you move on, that, and I apologize for not asking this moments earlier. Is there any kind of, I know you referenced the 100th Street that will have some federal grants associated with it or hopefully associated with it? Are there any federal grants we anticipate on this 107th Street?
Not, not on 107th Street. We were, we were able to receive some on 100th Street because it's not only a connector for Grimes and Johnston, but also Burbandale as well to the south.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Northwest 100th Street. This is actually north of 70th. So north, it would be to the, all the way to the right of your screen. You can see the roundabout there at 70th, just all the way to the left of the screen. So this is the segment of roadway that we recently had a resident come in and request that we move this up in the CIP, the need for a trail along this road. There's been some further discussion about a trail along 78th and maybe being able to get that one done prior to this. This one is approximately about a $5 million project. So shifting that forward, coupled with some of the other projects that we have going on further south of 100th Street, would potentially close two segments of 100th at one time, which we want to avoid. So what we've looked at is we've, we've got this one kind of staying where it's at. The design is in '23, '24. We would look at relocating utilities and acquiring right-of-way if needed along the corridor in '24, '25, and then do the construction in '25, '26. This roadway design is much like 107th. We're not looking to go three lanes at this point or to fully reconstruct it with concrete. Eventually, the main way out of Crosshaven and some of those neighborhoods that are in that northwest area will actually connect down through 78th or
86.
What's that?
86.
Will connect down to 86th Street along Valley Parkway. So this would be another, you know, we would mill the surface off, patch some of those bad areas, and then put in an asphalt overlay over the top of it, along with a trail that would connect from 70th over to Crosshaven out to 78th. Okay, so this is our Northwest, the 100th Street. This one is currently under design. Here is a couple of renderings that SEH has put together for us. What, what you're going to hear at the next council meeting is we've had some issues with the federal swap dollars that have been pulled back. So now we have to go through our regular federal process. And what we were asked about a month and a half ago was to go through and do an archaeological survey on this corridor. So with that, the engineer is getting a subcontractor on board to perform that survey for us. They're actually, have them signed, and they'll be starting here soon. But this is the last segment that is south of 70th. That's still two-lane urban section. And what we're, what we've got designed is a four-lane urban section. I think I said that wrong. It's a two-lane rural section. We're going to a four-lane urban section. So what we've looked at is possibly phasing this. We don't want to lose any momentum that we've got currently. So what we've talked about doing is Phase One, we would still go ahead and construct this spring from our south end up to just, just on the north side of White Oak Lane. This is the area that we're leaving the power overhead, so we can get our utilities relocated in a timely manner. It's not the segment that's going underground that would take a while. And there is actually no relocation of water main in this area either or sanitary sewer. So really, it would just be storm sewer and then paving the roadway. So what we're looking at and what you'll hear in the next council meeting when we bring the engineer and kind of talk through what all this means, is that we would look to construct that south half June through the end of next year to get that completed. That also allows the neighborhood to the east, another access point to get out and still get to the interstate. And then we would leave this segment for the following year. And with that, Windsor Parkway is still going to be phased to be constructed when school's not in session so that we can keep the connectivity from the west to the east so that they have access not only to Horizon, but some of that sits just off of the map. Any questions on that? All right, we'll move on to our next road project, which I kind of combined some of these. This is really starting into our eastern Merle Hay improvements. So you saw the earlier segment, which was Segment One or 1A. What we've got here and why I've got them listed out, I've got a Phase 2A and a 1B and a 2B. And when we get closer to actually constructing Phases One and Two, we'll have some further discussion with the full council. But really Phase One, and you've got a cul-de-sac that comes off of Phase One, just as well as you do Phase Two. So the real question is, is can we construct all of 63rd before we would dive into the 54th Court? If we can phase this over two years, which would also help allow, allow us financing and depending on some of our stormwater conversations currently, we're okay. But if we do have to space some of this out, that would allow us to have some, some room to be able to spread our funding out as well. So what we currently have in the project would be to construct Phase 1A, which would be 63rd. And then the following year, we would construct Phase 2A, which would be 54th Court. Same for 64th, it is 2A, and then this would be 2B. And if we did that, that allows if we have anything that's left undone on 63rd, our contractor will be in the next year, and we can have them button everything up on those two phases. If we get to that point and we think that we can get it all done in a year, we will, we will package it as a one-year project, but this gives us that flexibility of the way that it's in the CIP currently.
So 1A would be the first year, 1B would be year two, 2A would be year three, and 2B would be year four. Those, it would take you four years to do those first two phases?
Correct, yeah. The other way that we could look at that, and there are little ways out on the CIP. You saw that first phase was, I think, '24, '25, '25, '26, construction in '26, '27. Give or take a year there. You know, we may be able to look to at doing this. We may be able to package the second year, package the two cul-de-sacs together and combine, and then compress that from four years down to three. So that, that's another idea that we could, we could look at once we get into this area. Next slide. So this is Northwest 54th Avenue Road Diet. This has been in front of council before. It is actually coming up for design in '23, '24, and then construction in '24, '25. What you're looking at here in the center of the screen, this would be the intersection going into Lou Clarkson. And to the south would be Timber Ridge. And just off the map would be 78th. This is Foxborough Road. And what we've got is we've got a fairly wide pavement segment out here. We've got lots of turn lanes, right and left turn lanes and through lanes. And what we've looked at or had Snyder and Associates take a look at, is there a way that we can narrow this up? Because we do have a concern for a safe crossing here. We have kids traveling out of the neighborhood to the school and vice versa. When you have sporting events at Lou Clarkson, you've got parents that are parking over here and walking in. What we have done is we've got stop signs on both sides currently. We did recently put, in the last year, we put flashing, flashing red lights on the top of those to help draw some attention to those stop signs. But this is coming up, so part of the, the project too will be looking at that safe crossing for pedestrians and what can we do there as well. And I think, hang on just a second. And I know that we'll probably be talking with John and the Parks Department and looking at a trail in this area to see if, if we can put something along 54th, at least in this segment of the project, while we've, while we've got it under construction.
So Matt, can you explain right now what the crossing is that exists there to get from Lou Clarkson to Timber Ridge? Is it a, we used, I know we used to have those kind of the fold-down stop signs, but we added flashing lights, and is that permanent?
They, they're, well, they're, they're temporary until we get this reconstructed. So right now, you've still got the fold-down stop signs. And then the lights that we actually put on top of the stop signs are solar-powered. So the crossing guard, when he comes out and flips up the stop sign, he powers up the flashing lights. And then when he folds them down, he turns them off.
So the flashing lights, like for instance, and then one of the concerns I've always had is you've got a concert there on a Tuesday night at Timber Ridge, and people have to go park at Lou Clarkson. The stoplights are, the stop signs are folded up because the school's not, it's not. And so the flashing, you don't have any flashing lights or really anything to kind of stop people there?
No, not, not currently. It's, it's for the school hours only at the moment. I know that I went through the other night and had to put the stop signs down and shut the flashing lights off because there, it's, it's, there's a button on the bottom of them that they use a pole when they're putting their stop signs down. But I know that that's, that's a concern of councils is how do we create a safe crossing there permanently? And that's what we'll look at when we do the project. And I don't know if we'll end up having like a hawk signal here or some sort of rapid flashing beacon like I know Parkway does so that it can be utilized not only during school hours, but after hours as well.
Yeah, the crossing there, and we've heard some other, from other families around at some of the other schools. Horizon, as I've heard, I think I pass that on to you too, concerns of people crossing Windsor, or I think it's Windsor there from the north about maybe enhancing those crossings too. So I'm not sure I'm all that part of about the road diet part of it, but I do think we need an enhanced crossing there at some of our other school locations across the city.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at those. I did, Bob Devens with the school district did reach out to me about maybe putting some flashing lights on the top of those as well.
At Horizon?
Yeah, it's the, the crossing. We had modified that crossing a few years ago when we actually put those bumpouts out to narrow the, time the pedestrians in the road, slow the traffic down. My understanding is what's happening now is they're just not stopping for the stop sign. They kind of, they kind of come up to it, slow down, and then just roll through it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how these, how effective these fold-down stop signs are because they're not, because they're not out there permanently. People just, that's where I think the, you know, some sort of flashing beacon or something that's a little bit more of a presence that
Brings a little more attention to the actual stop sign. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that and work with the school district. The next project is actually in the works. This is our Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program or our ICAP program. This is going to take us from all the way to the interstate. We'll be able to coordinate with the signals at the interstate that Des Moines currently operates and take us all the way up to 70th Avenue. We're going to get a GPS clock that will coordinate or time, be able to actually communicate with Des Moines Systems. They have recently sent over some timings for us. We just need to get those in our system and see. Now, we still won't be able to talk to their system until we get this program through and actually be able to communicate with their signals. That'll allow us to kind of get some progression through the corridor and not get kind of hung up at the interstate or the Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh. Where else do you get hung up at? Windsor Parkway?
Yeah. Winwood, sorry.
Okay.
Can you go back to that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So Matt, did you say that, that coordination with the Des Moines traffic lights too? So other side of the highway is the Des Moines, right?
Correct.
And you're coordinating with them to, with all the traffic lights?
Yeah, this is all part of a DOT project. Des Moines was actually in the works of coordinating their corridor, Merle Hay corridor to the south. Kind of the, when we did our first ICAP project, I want to say it was back in 2010, that the, the, we were never able, ever able to coordinate and communicate with Des Moines System. DOT has kind of stepped in. They've put a project forward. We've got funding. So out of that 475,000, it's an 80, 20% match, 20% us, 80% the state. And then Des Moines has, like I said, they have shared their timing information with us. So once we get through our kind of design, what new equipment we're going to be putting in our cabinets and get our GPS clock so that we can actually talk with their system, then we'll be able to coordinate timings through the corridor through their south corridor and all the way through Johnston up to 70th.
Very good, thanks.
You're welcome. Project. So this is the, the road to the kayak launch. This is the current condition it's in. What you, the, the drive entering it from the right is out of the Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh. We left this in here. I mean, I believe this is a private road now. It was part of ours when we bought the hotel site, but we have since sold it. So we've got it in here as a placeholder. I know we don't like to do that, but it, we'll have to see if this moves forward or not, or if it's taken care of with the development. Our next one is a DOT-led project as well. This is Northwest 110th Street, up in the Northwest Annexation Area. This is Highway 415, 141 here in the corner, and this is the interchange that's just off of the map. North is to your right. So this would essentially our future development out in this area. This would take us up to 106th Avenue. This is also a joint project between the DOT, the City of Johnston, and Polk County. This would be a DOT-led project. They've asked that we pay our share. And what we've looked at for the design of this, this will eventually be a four-lane urban divided roadway once, once development takes place. But initial construction will be of a two-lane road, a two-lane urban section that'll have the full infrastructure, the full storm sewer in there that will support the four-lane road. So what we do in the future is while we're running head-to-head on the two-lane road is we construct the other half while it's still under traffic, get it constructed, and then swap traffic, and we're running two lanes in each direction. So that, that would be that project. That's to be paid back in three annual installments to the DOT with the first one beginning in '26, '27, and two years after that.
So that, so the road that's kind of a diagonal heading off, that's 141?
No, 141 is the two, this is 141 here. This is the interchange. This is 415 that goes to the Mile Long Bridge.
Oh, okay. So this is a map that is not turned, but the north toward the top?
No, north is
I would think, to the right there.
This is
Snyder and DOT would exclusively have maps pointed to the north, but geez Louise.
Matt, just so I understand this slide, because I can understand where north is, but that's all right. The comment I have though is, is that 1.385 million per year, right? So I mean, we're, we're talking that 5 million?
Yeah, it's, it's a little under 5 million.
What's the over, and, and that's the overall? That's just the Johnston component of it?
That's just the Johnston component.
What is the overall then for that project?
I will, I will have to get you that number. I can send it to you. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Thanks for clarifying. And how long of stretch of road is that? What are we getting for 5 million?
Well, you're getting your roadway infrastructure plus your, all of your storm sewer infrastructure that's set up to take off in the future. I mean, prices are only going to go up, so we're trying to set this up for the future. That's all the grading and everything done too, so. And then as we, as we annex to the north.
The is to the right.
So as we, as we, as we annex to the north, the road would fully become Johnston's eventually, potentially. Next slide. This is what we started with. This is our Highway 141 interchange. It's a tight diamond configuration here along 141. This was the earlier Town or Drive that we discussed going through the Troused development. But with this, there's been some, you know, if we, if we want to get this moving quicker and get some development out in the annex area, what we've looked at is trying to get design started. If the city takes that design on and then the DOT would, would construct this project, we can kind of get, speed that process up. What we were able to do was go back through some of our, yes, and it wasn't me, it was Teresa was able to do was to go back through some of our projects that we've got wrapped up that will be wrapping up soon. And we found the, the money so that we can get the design going. This has a couple of different variations to it. And this is our tight diamond interchange with a road going both ways. Here's the Beaver Run Golf Course there on the right side. This could potentially be constructed without that road going to the, to the east to begin with. And then that could be added later, but there's a couple of different variations. But ultimately, full build-out would look something like this. Okay.
Matt, with that, with that tight diamond, I can't remember. I think we've talked about this, but I can't remember the answer. Are we going to have a trail? Are we going to make room for a trail to go from east to west underneath the diamond, underneath the access?
We can, we can talk about that. We haven't actually gone through that design process, but we will take that into consideration when we're, when we're designing this. We're crossing the DOT right-of-way, so we'll have to kind of see what they're I mean, we've got one out here underneath High 8035, so we'd have to take a look at either putting one under or over attached to the overpass.
I think that we need to be forward-looking in terms of those connections.
So Matt, before you go to sanitary sewer, so just looking at kind of, this is over the next one, two, three, four, five, six years. It's $42 million. So Teresa, just kind of wanting to get sort of a sense on, have you, have you priced these out as far as impact on the debt levy? Because I presume 42 million, most of this is funded through the debt levy.
There are a few of them that are certainly tiff. And I've given the, the complete draft now, CIP, to Matt Stufel, and we'll have his official financial analysis of the report, but I did financial analysis of the report. But I did, in fact, I was asking Cindy. She does have the software here, but look real quick. There's quite a bit that's going to be revolving loan fund also. But total general obligation for 20, I got to make sure I'm in, get the right years when I talk to you here. So 23, 24, so the one we'll be working on this in a few months here is four point, about 4.7 million. And the next year is 9 million. Now, we usually have to bond also for our TIF projects, but those, that funding source is TIF revenue. So we'll have a larger bond issue, but the debt service portion of those bond that will be paid back next year would be about 4.7. And then the next year is at nine, and then the third year is at five, six, and then we're at four, seven. So we've tried to kind of level it off. Now, what does that do to everything? And I haven't had my, that's why I haven't had my long spreadsheet and he hasn't run some amortization schedules to see, because obviously the interest rates are much higher. You know, outside forces are much different, but that's where we're at for at least next year at this point.
So the process will be, obviously you, every department head has sort of submitted this type of their document. But we'll have Matt do some sort of analysis to see which of these are funded through the debt levy?
Well, in, in the total CIP right now, all of that, all of the CIP projects, when we put them in, we have to determine their funding source. So I can run a report, which I ran right now, that says what their funding sources are. And so I'm telling you the amount that's to be funded by general obligation tax bonds is that, that 4 million. If we were to look at the total for next year for all departments or all funding sources, which are cash, TIF, road use tax, state or federal funding, TIF is the biggie. The projects in next year total 26,300,000. The next year are 32 million dollars. So SRF loans, every project is in here with their funding source listed. So the one I was telling you about is the debt that we would have to issue debt service levy for.
So that's quite a bit smaller, it seems like, than the amount that's, that's being.
Than the grand total.
Then funded off of the, the other foot sources not impacting the debt levy.
Right.
That's helpful.
And the largest one, quite frankly, is the state revolving loan fund, which is paying for water sewer infrastructure. And then TIF. The 100th Street reconstruction projects are in a TIF district. Those are big reconstruction projects. Both 54th to 62nd and 70th to the city limits. Those are both big reconstruction projects in a TIF area. This Northwest 62nd Avenue from here to Beaver Drive, that's in our TIF number one district. So you have some, Matt has some really big projects in here that we're saying at this point that we would recommend we pay for the amount of TIF versus the, the debt levy. Of course, you know, it's a trade-off, so to speak.
Yeah, that would be the, that's very helpful. It might be this document that we have in front of us, the projects by department. It, it would help benefit, I know, me and maybe others if it, if there was a column that indicated what the funding source was, whether it was proposed to be TIF or general fund or.
I certainly have all of those reports. We were just trying to, at this point, go through the projects with you so you could understand each of the projects. Then when I come back in two weeks is when I would have the full CIP, draft CIP done for you with the funding mechanisms. We'd talk through them one more time, see if you had any questions for department directors or myself. And if not, then we would set our public hearing and that type of thing, but I don't know if I can, through our software, I don't know if I can run a combination of his project with the funding right there. I could have ran you two reports, one that said his project and one of his projects by funding source. I could have done that, but I usually have them as two separate reports. Not that it matters, but anyway.
And we could run that report and, and share it with the council.
But I think, excuse me for interrupting, but I think Matt's going to talk about these other two projects. We have one initial, one, one more finance budget meeting this week on Wednesday, where we'll talk to community development about his departments and we'll also talk about his stormwater utility, to which he'll talk about both his budget and his CIP projects. And you've heard about all of the big projects in the CIP. So, so you, you've heard the whole picture from each department and then I'll come back with it all put together as one picture.
Great, thanks.
All right, moving on to our sanitary sewer projects. Once again, we, we've kind of grouped the phases here, 1A, 2A, 1B, 2B. Our East of Merle Hay projects. And again, you can, you can see, see what those projects look like, which roads they are. I, I would ask that when you get into, if you get into plan it, just kind of ignore the, this is an older map. So the dates up top don't really coincide with how they are programmed into the CIP. But the numbering of the system still does, so. So that would be the first, and, and really in the sanitary sewer, what we've done is you'll see these come up again in the water segment of the CIP. We broke those out and tried to get those to their correct funding place. So the sanitary sewer is paid for out of the sanitary fund, the water is paid out of the water fund, and then the rest of the project is paid for out of our roadway fund. So, next slide. So here's our Northwest area sanitary sewer. The next two items are Segment B and Segment C. Segment B. So Segment B would be right here at the north end of the golf course and would kind of go up north and serve and reach Sailerville Drive. We do have the component of a lift station and a forced main back to gravity sewer on the north side of the golf course. That will go to design in '23, '24. Roughly a little over a million dollars for that design. And then construction would begin '24, '25 at about 5.8 million dollars. Then you move into Segment C. Segment C, the design is currently underway. Council approved that a few months ago. And Segment C here is at the end of 2A and it really stretches over on the, to the west of 141 towards the TROSE development. And right now that's slated for construction early '23, ending hopefully, and by the end of '23 to get that lift station in. That again is a little bit of gravity and then the rest of that would be forced main and a lift station sitting on the west side. Now, that lift station also will serve this green area here to the northwest. So it really sets up for future expansion in the northwest area as well.
Are there other segments after those segments or do they, are they just kind of?
No, currently right now, what we've, what we've done is we've got them to those development areas. And then generally as this kind of expands, the developers will construct the, the rest of the sanitary sewer.
True up into that kind of.
Into this area here, yeah, we'll.
But the, the blue up in the top too.
Up here.
Off of B, everything will just kind of develop, development-driven.
Yeah.
Developer paid from that stub off.
Right. Go to the next slide. So this is the Bright Drainage Way trunk sanitary sewer. This one was actually slated to begin design this year, but we've got, we've got a pretty stable. So this is coupled with a stormwater project that David and I have worked on through the Bright Drainage Way, which, which essentially runs from just south of the pond here that sits behind Mr. Allen's house. Where here's 98th Street, the Candle Ridge Development, and it runs down here to 70th. So we've got a drainage way. You can see the ponds that are to the west of that, that drain through that drainage way. We've got to put a trunk main in to service some of 98th Street as well as some of 95th Street and 93rd as well. So we really want to couple those together so that we're not in there, turn it up with a sanitary sewer project and then coming back and doing a stormwater project. So we did push those out a couple of years. We'll look at starting design of those in '24, '25 and then construct those in '25, '26. And it'll be a joint storm sewer, sanitary sewer project. Hopefully to get a little bit better of economies of scale and, and get both projects done at once. Next slide. This is our Orchard Meadows One Lift Station. This lift station is, really takes all of our sewage from our lift stations as well as our small grinder pumps north of 84th Street on Beaver Drive. They all really feed into this pump station and this pump station then pushes it all the way down to Merle Hay Road. So what we really need to do with this is we need to take a look at our generator. We've had some issues with our generators starting up here. We've, we've got that under control, but right now it's really, it's a little bit undersized. It was built for a full build-out. We haven't got full build-out yet. And we've got some age on that generator. So we need to get a little bit of a larger generator in this area as well as update the control panel as technology has improved. You know, we, we've got some soft starts on our pumps and it is roughly pushing, like I said, it's pushing that 12. By the time that we get this in here in '23, '24, you know, we'll be, be near that 13 to 15 years of age. So this is, this was our original, this is our second original pump station, but it's our first one up Beaver Drive. We do have another one on, on Beaver Drive and Johnston Drive that was up. Things going really well with that. We just got to get some upgrades to, to the existing system as we've experienced growth. The next one's Pioneer Parkway Trunk Sewer Main. So really, council approved our cleaning decision package last year. We got in and we got to cleaning on our first segment. What we found on our trunk main along Pioneer Parkway was we, when we cleaned it, we went through and televised it, what we found, where we found roots that had actually grown into the, through the joints into that pipe. So what we're looking at doing with this project, and we've got those cleaned up, what we really want to do is go back through here, line this so it closes those joints off so that we don't get those tree roots that are growing into that pipe. So Matt's slated for '23, '24 at roughly about $600,000. Next slide. So this would be the second segment of our Northwest Area Sanitary Sewer. You'll see it's Segment 2A. It's really the orange line here that connects up to that north edge of the golf course that connects C and B. If you recall, we did 1A, it was, we had a development, the Crosshaven Development going here and we needed to get through that area. So that was constructed earlier this year. So Segment 2A is the one that really runs through Camp Dodge and we've made great headway with getting easements through those. We still got a few, few items to, to work through, but I think we're on our way. With that, like I said, the design is already underway and we look to try and get that let and constructed early '23, by the end of '23 as well, or have it completed by the end of '23. Next. All right, so I'll stop there real quick if there's any questions on the sanitary sewer projects. See none, we'll move into our water projects. Again, as stated earlier, we'll see the East of Merle Hay, that's just the respective funding segment that they come out of. So our, our water mains will come out of our, our water inner, or actually it'll be through SRF and eventually paid for out of our operating fund. So this is again Segment 1A, 2A, 1B and 2B. Like we talked about earlier, as it gets closer, we may repackage 2A and 2B to combine those. Like I said, these do coincide with the road projects and, and those respective years. Next one is our Northwest Beaver Drive 78th Avenue Pump Station. So this was our original pump station for drinking water that is with our main 2 million gallon storage tank here at Beaver Drive and 78th. And this actually pumps water up Beaver Drive to our north city limits. You can see on the picture to the right there, you know, it's, this was constructed, I want to say '96, '97. It's never been updated. So with the reconstr, or actually with the new construction of our pump station that we did on 66th, right next to the soccer field. This has kind of become a redundant factor in our system. So if that ever goes down, we would have to rely on this to pump water up north on Beaver Drive. So what we've looked at is getting, we were actually under contract currently with HR Green for the design of this at about 150,000 bucks and look at reconstructing that in '23, '24 and getting that brought up to current standards. Next slide. So we get into our Northwest Area Water Service. We've got Segment B. Would be, this would be Segment B that would run up here along to 415. It's actually slated for design in '23, '24 and then construction in '24, '25. Segment C would be the one that would go north on Beaver Drive and make, finish making that loop. I know it seems a little bit out of order, but this is, this is just the way that they were listed in the CIP. We'll get to actual Segment A here in just a minute. You'll see the water tower that is slated to be in this area up here in that annex area. It's, right now it's currently slated for design in '27, '28, depending on development. That water tower could slide out too. So it's, it's, right now it's just programmed in there, but we'll reevaluate every year and see if we need to slide it further out. Our next one is the update for our water system master plan. We first did one in October of '24. Been pretty vigilant on this. We've actually completed all of our short and midterm projects, which was our booster pump station there at 66 was our last midterm project. So we're looking at pushing out into that annex area. So that would be kind of our longer-term projects. And we've kind of got an idea on that schedule. So what we're really looking at doing is this year we'll get under, underway on updating that. That, that'll really come back and help us program future CIP and what those short-term and midterm needs are. It'll also give us our long-term projections. But with everything being complete or not, with all of our short and midterm being complete, we really need to take another look at our system and see if we have any shortfalls or we need for redundancy, those types of things. So that's slated for yet this year as well. Well, here we get to our Northwest Area Water Service. This is our Segment A. It is currently under design. I believe we let that contract a couple of months ago, but it's under design or will be starting design here with construction in '23, '24. Really takes off from up 78th Avenue at 107th and then runs kind of parallel to 141. It gets us really right kind of to the north edge of that, of the golf course. The next one is, it's Hyperion Point Water Main. It's an old ductile iron water main up there. Back in 2017 and 2019, we've got, we've found some corrosive soils that deteriorate that pipe. This is really kind of a fix to go in and address that. We've only had those two. So we, we had this in the budget. We haven't experienced it anymore. So we, we kind of slid this back just a little bit for '25, '26, roughly at a cost of about $55,000. But you go in there and you attach these anodes to, to the pipe and it really helps stop or slow that corrosion down. Just extends the life of the infrastructure that we do have in the ground without having to go in and completely replace it. The next one is Northwest 54th Avenue Pump Station. This is located out at 78th and 54th. And you can see the, the facility there on the left. It's a, it's a below-grade pit. That's what it looks like inside the pit on your right side. We'd look at design on that '25, '26 to go in there and upgrade kind of our control panels as well as. We'd look at design on that 25, 26 to go in there and upgrade kind of our control panels as well as some of the valves and the pumps. Those pumps are roughly about 12 years old. So I think by the time that we reach this and our C I P will be in that roughly 14 to 16 age timeframe. You get about a 15 to 20 years out of your pump, so we'll evaluate this as it gets closer, see if there's a need to, to push this project back as well. Last project is the 16 inch transmission main. And what this really does, this coincides with that Northwest 54th Avenue project, but it's the water main portion. We did put in a 16 inch main with the intersection project. We've got our feed that comes in from Sailerville up here at the T intersection. It's actually stubbed to just across Beaver Drive. So it would just be making that connection during that project. Currently we've got a 12 inch main with a 16 on each ends. We've got a 12 inch kind of sandwiched between. Two 16s. And that would coincide there in 25, 26 at roughly 90,000 bucks. That should wrap up the C I P. Okay. That's, that's all of the C I P for roads, water and sewer and be happy to answer any questions about the water or anything else.
Will also have any questions for Matt?
Will that PowerPoint be in the library?
Yep.
Thank you.
We can, we can get that. I just wrapped that up about 10 minutes before.
Other questions? Thank you, Matt.
All right. While I, while I'm up here, if you don't mind, I'll give a brief project update on Merle Hay and Johnston Drive. We've got about 300 and roughly 50 feet of paving to do yet on Johnston Drive for our right turn through lane. They were down there today forming that up and they are scheduled to pour that at 9:30 tomorrow. Hopefully we can get that in. The weather is going to hold for us at warm backups. We can get that in, get that project wrapped up. It's the last piece of road paving that we need to do. We'll still have some trails and sidewalks to come back and button up and restoration in the spring. We'll get some paint down, maybe temporary paint down. Once we get our strength in our concrete and get that project buttoned up for the winter. Those are friends with Mid-American working with us. I've got an email in my inbox. They were talking about working times. They still need to relocate their poles. What we've talked about currently is they're experiencing supply chain shortages. So they're going to relocate their overhead poles out of the way of our trail so that we can complete our project. They still intend to do that by the end of this year or that's their goal. We talked as, as early as last week and that's still their intention, so. We'll see what their email talks about working hours. So I know we want to limit them on Merle Hay roads that we're not interrupting rush hours. So probably looking at a nine to three or an eight 30 to 330 working timeframe for those folks to, to get those adjusted.
I'd like to follow up a little bit on that. Let's say that we, they don't get those sections of, you can't get those sections of sidewalks poured. So you're going to have nice sidewalks and then this gap and then nice sidewalks and a gap. What do you, what are your thoughts? Are you going to keep the whole stretch of sidewalk closed? Are you going to put some gravel or mulch in those sections? If we get some snow, will you be able to clear them? I'm just curious of what your, what, let's call it the plan B, if you can't get them poured.
Plan B for at least the east side of the road is once the poles are out would be to go in and, and try and put some gravel or some hard surface rock down so that you could still traverse those. We'll have to work with the property owners because clearing those with a snow plow or whatever shovel, you know, isn't the easiest thing. But I would like to try and at least get a hard surface in there so that we, in those gaps, so that we can keep some pedestrian access through the corridor. They're in there on the west side, moving some of the last Lumen boxes that need to be relocated so that we can finish up that side, the west side. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get all of that in so that we would at least have a hard surface connection at least down one side of that road.
And I guess that leads me to another question here. Will the, will the business owners are responsible for clearing this sidewalk, but it's a whole lot more sidewalk than they had before? So do you anticipate any problems or, I mean, are they going to be up to speed, knowing that that's their responsibility?
We're still working through that, but generally if it's a trail, the Parks Department has been clearing the trails.
Okay.
So if on that, so on the east side, I mean, and we'll work with, with John there in getting those cleared.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Matt? If not, we will adjourn our work session and we will come back in just a couple of minutes and have our.